Oh, three. And we have a quorum. So. Let's come to order. And a call to order. To review and accept the agenda? Do we have a motion?
We move. We do that.
A second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Those accepting the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. Yeah, it's done. Do we have any communications? Any people here to speak? No?
No, but I would just say, in this section of the agenda, as I mentioned to RNESU in the last meeting, just as an FYI, we are doing away with Let's Talk. As a district, we paid $20,000 for that tool. And we have created an identical tool called Reach Out to Avoid Litigation for free internally. So it will still look the same. It'll be on our website. You can still reach the board. You can reach me. You can reach schools. But it will be a decent cost savings.
Reach Out?
Reach Out.
Let's Talk is now Reach Out?
As of July 1st. People continue talking until then.
A consent agenda? Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move to pull off letter E. OVUHS participation in VPA member-to-member agreements?
I move to pull off personnel.
I guess I should pull off minutes.
Pull it off. No consent.
I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, pulling off A, E, and D.
Moved.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nobody? Okay. Joanie. A, the minutes?
Oh, this would be super easy. My name is spelled wrong.
It was an S.
On the N, and there's not an S in there.
My name is also spelled wrong on there.
I never get your name right.
Oh, and my name was spelled wrong on there. Larson is E.N., not O.N.
Oh, for heaven's sakes.
That's okay. Small edits are fine. Letter E. OVUHS participation in VPA member-to-member agreements?
Yep. I just wanted to confirm that athletes coming, student athletes coming from other schools are required to abide by the tolerance policies set out by the Vermont Principals Association.
Under VPA?
Yep. I believe that is the case. I wanted to confirm it.
District policy.
Yeah, it's a district policy. It's the VPA policy. I just.
Can you? I don't know that that requires any action at this point.
No, I.
An awareness?
I just wanted to pull it out and acknowledge.
And we will be talking about those sports teams, I believe, later on in the meeting? There's some forums about?
I think that's part of, isn't that part of the consent agenda?
Oh, that was in the consent agenda. Okay.
I don't think there's any action.
Okay. So it's just a reiteration of the tolerance agreements?
Correct.
For those towns that participate?
Correct.
With us?
Yes. That students and their supporters are supportive of all students who participate in the sports.
Correct.
Are you asking that the member-to-member participants be informed of that? Or are you just mentioning it here among us?
I guess it's a bit of a question to verify that that's the case, that when they sign this agreement, they're agreeing to those policies. Is that the case?
Can you clarify that, Kristin?
Yes. The only one who is not currently a VP, I don't know if RACs is a VPA member. Do you know if Rollin area Christian School is? MSJ is. Proctor is, which means that they all already provide those for their student athletes. But we can make sure with Stephen Keith that we also give them those agreements before the sports season starts.
Okay. Thank you. That's the clarification needed.
I will make sure.
Just to clarify, it would be moot whether they're involved with VPA or not because of our internal, our district policies that would require them to do all the things that VPA policies are going to say?
In theory, except students don't necessarily read or, I mean, they read, but students aren't necessarily cognizant of our level policy if they aren't our students. I think making sure that they get the VPA agreement is probably the easiest, cleanest way to do it. But yes, that for their sending school would 100% be. We can also send our policies to RACs, Proctor, and MSJ as well.
Are they even held to our policies?
Has this been done before?
If they, member-to-member agreements are pretty common. Yeah.
Give us authority to?
If they step foot on our athletic fields as a part of member-to-member agreement, yes, VPA dictates that you have to follow that school, those schools' policies. But again, we can make sure that the schools get it, and we can make sure that the students get it.
Awesome. Thank you.
I had a question about this also. Are VPA member-to-member agreements on a rolling admission-type basis? Or is this, all the agreements, member-to-member agreements that are going to happen between our district and other districts have to happen right now? So like in the fall, if there's some student from a school who wants to participate and we, and it's not part of the three things listed here, can we vote on that then? Or does this all have to happen now?
No. Yeah, you can add it at any point. Basically, once you open member-to-member, you're sort of agreeing with VPA, and then it allows you more flexibility. And those are also reviewed annually. Right? So if all of a sudden, we had a girls' soccer program that was so flush, we didn't want to accept any other students, then we might shut down member-to-member for girls' soccer, but keep it open for volleyball or something.
Yeah. I imagine there's students who like, aren't going to know until the fall, oh, I want to go do this, and it's not here.
Thank you. I think it was Kevin had a question on personnel?
Yeah, I have actually two now that I'm looking at it. First is, I don't understand what Mrs. Roberts' new job is, community-based learning educator.
So we have had that this year. So that was a program that was introduced by Otter Valley last spring. And it's been this year taught by Laura O'Brien. And so Chris Roberts has asked to transition into that position. Laura O'Brien is moving back to a classroom position in elementary schools.
Okay. I didn't understand, thanks for your mind about Laura. I don't understand, it's a teaching position? How's that work?
So do you know more about, do you have specifics about what she does, what program? So she?
Not specific, but I mean, basically, you're working with kids to get them into the community and then also into, you know, potential.
Job sites.
Job sites for internships and what have you.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. And she does work with students on IEPs and students not on IEPs. Like, her program's actually grown fairly substantially this year.
Thanks. And then, I think I know this, but I might as well nail it down. I'm not quite sure what an elementary dean of students does either.
We're not quite sure either, Kevin. We had, this position is a one-year position funded with ESAR as a way to respond to what we know have been some significant needs and requests at Nashouby School. And so we are really looking at this year at refining those programs, policies, and procedures specifically around discipline, behavior. And this sort of gives us a cushion to next year, come to you as the Otter Valley Board, to make some decisions. But this person is currently a teacher who's taking a one-year leadership leave to do this for us.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor of the consent agenda with those clarifications? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then we'll move on. Our global ends monitoring policy. This presentation. Susannah White?
Yeah, so Susannah's part of it, so do I. So let me share my screen so you can see what we're talking about.
Okay.
While he's getting ready, I think he has some coaches online that are going to?
Yep. Suzanne's going to join in for something here in a minute with part of the presentation. And then part of our coaching staff there is also Laura King, instructional coach for pre-k classes, and joining us also is our MTSS coach. So let me share the screen here. Okay. So, you know, I talked to, I know, I remember I came, and Suzanne and I came and gave a presentation to the board, I believe in November, December-ish, at Nashouby when we were there. And I just want to give you an update of where we are and what we're looking at. So here's the work that's been going on thus far. So it's kind of, for some of you, this is a refresher, for some of you, it's brand-new. So in the fall of 2022, principals share the results of the equity audit with their buildings. And then winter of '22 and '23, first draft of an equity action plan was drafted. And then also in spring of '23, we are continuing as a central office administration team to dig into that draft application and, or just the draft action plan. And also the CIA team, who, part of them are here, and part of our coaches are digging into that plan as well. So all of our licensed faculty members this year participate in PD strands. Those strands happened in October, excuse me, well, during our kickoff in August and also in October, March, and then just yesterday finished those strands. The strands there are all under the umbrella of inclusive teaching and learning. So the pathways there are universal design for learning, trauma-informed instructional practices, embedding SELR, social-emotional learning, in academic instruction, identity-conscious teaching and learning, and data for equity. Those were all led by our instructional, or excuse me, our coaching team, our CIA coaching team. And like I said, those strands just finished up yesterday morning for our teachers. Our building admin and our central office administrators participated in CEEL, Center for Educational Leadership through the University of Washington. And that PD throughout the year was leading equitable schools. We, our trainer, our facilitator, came to us just about every, every other month or so, they're about in person. And we had focused walks in school buildings. We went to classrooms. We had student groups talk to us about different things. And probably one of the most, probably the best experiences, we were at Nashouby. And we, before that, we were at Otter Valley and had a talk with two different student groups, BIPOC student group, and then, sorry, and LGBT QIA group, Otter Alliance. And so that was really informative stuff, what we got from them. It was very interesting for our admin to hear that. But on the other side here, we went to an elementary school, Nashouby. And of all the information we got, the fourth graders. We talked to fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, and the fifth and fourth graders just blap. They gave us so much information, it was really funny, and really good stuff. It was very interesting of like, well, so why does this happen in a classroom? Why does that happen? You know, why does the students who always act out, why do they get all the good stuff? So they really gave us some really good information as to what's going on in classrooms with students in social-emotional learning and equity and inclusion. Kristin and I are part, and also Max Berman, our new coordinator of community and outreach, or communications and outreach, are part of the Student Advisory Council and also the Parent Advisory Council. And we're also looking to, for next year, to increase that to all of our buildings for a student advisory group. I'll get to Stories Matter event here a little bit. Actually, Suzanne's going to take over that for me in a minute. So our curriculum work, our teacher leader group started this year, it's a pre-K, the sixth teacher leader group. They started in December, mapping our curriculum with an equity lens. And that's going to be continuing with our seven through 12 teachers, teacher leader group, this fall, and looking for a end project or end goal by the end of next school year. But again, that's going to be a living document. That's not going to be something we just check the box and we're done with. That's going to be something we're continually updating and making sure that we are being responsive to our students. Then also throughout the year, we've been ongoing partnerships with different outside organizations for student groups, Outright Vermont, Up for Learning. And then also, what we're really doing here is, we've realized that we are, we have really good data internally. We're getting good information from our kids. So right there, we're saying we're continuing to collect and disaggregate our local data. Basically, you know, free reduced lunch, that's FRL, sorry, education, we all know, we're acronym-heavy. Disability status, race, gender, et cetera, that kind of thing. We're really making sure we're talking to our kids and getting information from them. So I'm going to turn over Susannah here for a minute here. She's going to talk about an event that she led in April. So Susannah, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes. I remember back in the winter, hearing about the Stories Matter work that we're doing, a project really designed to get all community stakeholders, teachers, parents, board members, educators, together, thinking about literacy and the intersection of the power of stories and the power of, you know, many stories across diverse social experiences of all kinds. And helping us support critical conversations around that. So in April, we had a postponed, really wonderful event at Nashouby, was well-attended. And folks, it was sort of a two-part event. We had a community workshop around the danger of a single story, which is a TED Talk I highly recommend. If you haven't ever seen it, you can grab it on YouTube by the author, Shilanda Edite. Talks about the power of story and the power of many stories, as I mentioned. And then the second part of the event, folks really teamed up, and they read, reviewed, and rated over 70 books that will ultimately become part of book bundles, which we're in the process of finalizing now, ordering those books. And then we will create some accompanying optional curriculum support for teachers to engage their students in conversations related to social-emotional learning and transferable skills building through those books. Using a book as vehicles to really get to some important learning. And each of the grade-level themes, as we've shared with you before, you know, is designed around those kinds of skills and questions. So for example, one of the themes is one is the community, and there's standards backing up kind of wanting students to be able to think about how do we exist together in community and embrace each other for all of our commonalities and our differences, et cetera. So I think there's some exciting potential. The product is going to be strong, but I think the process kind of itself has already proved to be valuable. So it's been wonderful.
Thanks, Suzanne. So want to come back to our equity action plan draft. It's a draft, it's a rough draft, still working on that. And I'll give you more to that in a minute. But what we did come down to is six goals that we're looking to dive into. So there are, and I know it's kind of a hard grade, it's all leading to you there. So academic achievement, so improve disproportionality on the basis of race, socioeconomic status, and disability status in academic achievement. School and culture and climate, or, excuse me, school culture and climate. Improve climate and culture for students and staff with a focus on the experiences of marginalized groups. Recruitment and hiring, recruit, employ, support, retain, and continuously develop an increasingly diverse and culturally responsive workforce. Community engagement, engage families, community partners, and all their stakeholders in culturally appropriate ways that recognize the value and wisdom and knowledge that they bring to each classroom, school, and our NESU as a whole. Professional development and learning, provide professional development, training, and engagement opportunities to inform and practice cultural sensitivity and increase awareness of personal bias and inequities in leading, teaching, counseling, advising, and coaching practices. And the last one here is curriculum, teaching, and learning. Provide an environment that supports the creation and implementation of culturally responsive instructional practices in curriculum and eliminate barriers to equitable instruction. So those are the goals that we're really diving into. So the way this plan works is, for each goal, we have one to three, sometimes four, again, draft format, expected results. What do we expect to see from these goals? And then the way this plan's set up, it's kind of like a trifold. On the left side, you have all of our challenges, all the things that we're working through in the building. What are those challenges that affect those goals or getting to those expected results? In the middle of that trifold, what are our strategies to combat those challenges? And the other side is, what are the budget and policy implications to get to those expected results? Again, those are things we're teasing through right now. So we've learned a lot through this process, really. And when I came to and spoke to you in December, we were already fairly along in that equity action plan draft. And what we learned in the first part here is, we moved way too quickly. We learned that we need to dive into this work without a sense of urgency because it's such big work. We don't want to make any huge implications or huge judgments without the proper vetting behind it. So right there, we want to basically avoid the temptation to overemphasize quick and highly visible results. And we want to resist the urge to simplify complex issues and slow it down and encourage deeper analysis. And that's really what we're doing right now. We are picking apart the plan that we wrote and making it better and putting more thought into what those expected results will be. When we weigh our decisions through a cost-benefit analysis, we want to take an expansive view of all costs, not just financial ones, including credibility, morale, and resources in use. We also need, for that, we need to, in that plan, provide and continue to provide professional development for our administrators and our teachers and support staff. And then we also need to make sure that we are building upon our equity plan, built upon trust, commitment, and relationship building, and the resources we have. So what are we doing? What are we going for? That's what we're in the process of, what does that look like down the line? So down the line, this summer, early fall, we're going to continue to review and refine the draft equity action plan. We're going to increase our, and improve our stakeholder engagement, bringing in all sides so we can discuss. And that includes students, community members, what have you. And then our plan is, late fall, is to share and implement the equity action plan with our NESU community. And with that, any questions?
So.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. When you say "we," who's working on this this summer?
Well, we right now is, would be, our incoming assistant superintendent, Debbie Alexander, myself, Kristin works with us on that. Our coaching team, they do have a summer off. So we met actually today with kind of a to-do list, if you will. And the coaching team does meet, they'll meet with Debbie, I believe, well, actually, they haven't said a date yet, but it is in the summer. That's for Debbie to kind of figure out when that's going to be. And then jumping right into that when we start back in August.
And a follow-up question would be, how much do the teachers know about the plan, the process of building it, and all of that?
Teachers have yet to see the plan. Our admin has reviewed it three times.
With still an awful lot of things that they would like to see different, right?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, each time they reviewed it, it was a different lens. And every time we review that same plan, the amount of comments that are generated, just because we're looking at it a different way, is expansive and it's big. We're realizing that what we thought we could provide in a relatively short period of time, we really needed to back off and really dive into it and make sure it was a very sustainable plan that's good for all moving forward.
Could you clarify the comment? I gleaned something that sounded like it might be a gem, and I was wondering if you could clarify what you, it sounds like you've moved from sort of this big picture, some external supports, to get a plan together. And now we're really looking at the local level.
Yes.
You said you're getting really good local data that's driving this emphasis now, not some pie in the sky perspective.
Yes. We're looking internal. We really are looking internal, what our students need, what's our, like I said, our gender, not gender, but free reduced lunch status, our socioeconomic status, attendance rates. That information is all very much at our fingertips and is what we really need to look at for our kids.
Great. A minute. It sounds that's the direction we should be going. It sounds like that's moving to the local data level. Any other questions?
Go for it. Kevin?
Yeah. I have the same question I had in December, December 21st. This audit's been out for a year, we haven't seen it. Why haven't we seen it?
Because it's FERPA-protected.
Has the parent committee seen it?
No. It's FERPA-protected.
Okay.
No one's seen it. And what we did do was give you an addendum, which was pulled from the audit, all we can give you that isn't identifiable. So we included, ahead of the packet, pieces that sort of explain the questions that they asked, the tools that they used, like all of those sort of things. The document is FERPA-protected and can't go out.
Okay. So we haven't discussed, and I've got the date here for this, September 1st, 2021, I raised the issue of flaws in the audit, and those have never been addressed. And use the expression, the train's leaving the station in December. Chugged out pretty far. We still haven't talked about the flaws in the audit.
Respectfully, Kevin, a question that I have for you about that is, as you've never seen the audit, what are you basing the flaws on the audit results on?
So that's a bit of a catch-22, since you just told me I can't see the audit.
Right. But.
I'm basing it on the questions, the questionnaire that was made available to us by Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium.
Okay.
And that was when Jean was superintendent, we were able to request a link to read those questions.
To do that, yeah, the surveys.
So that's what I've read. And when you say, what's been made available to us is in the packet, you mean today?
It should have gone out with the full board packet ahead of time.
Yeah, this week's packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So yeah, that's what raised some serious red flags for me. I think it's a flawed survey. I've said that a number of times. I think it's frankly a biased survey, and we need to address those. I'm happy to do that now.
Well, so I think, you know, I think that that's for sure a fair assertion based on a survey that you saw. I will say a couple of things, though. One, that was the equity audit that we engaged in when Jean was superintendent. Surveys out to staff, parents, the community, and students was one piece of the audit, right? So the audit also did interviews of students. They reviewed all of our data that we gave them. So we gave them attendance data, discipline data, free and reduced lunch data, you know, academic data. They basically engaged in the audit that, so survey, that survey aside, and I apologize because I do not remember the survey language, but that survey aside, they basically engaged in the audit that we gave them, right? So we sort of framed it up and said, okay, because back then I was curriculum director, right? We noticed years ago that there, not surprisingly, that there are disproportionate results for students based on gender, socioeconomic status, definitely IEP status. One of the biggest things that popped as a place of need when I was curriculum director was skewed discipline data, right? So students on IEPs or students living below the poverty line had this result happen if they had an infraction. Students above the poverty line or students not on IEPs had this sort of. So we sort of begged Mid-Atlantic Consortium to sort of dig into this. So that's the one thing. And then the second thing ties into sort of what Tyler said, that the audit now has become one piece of what we are looking at. Not necessarily because, I agree that that survey tool was flawed. Again, I don't remember it, so I'm happy to engage in that conversation with you, definitely, if you remember what the survey looked like. But for us this year, the equity audit, I don't want to say it's a moot point because that sort of diminishes the work that was included to be a part of that, but also what we found from it. But what we have learned this year, just simply by existing in our schools, by talking to kids, by looking at new data, is that it almost doesn't matter. All of those themes are just reality in our schools. Our kids continue to not score as well if they're on IEPs or if they are living below the poverty line. Our students continue to have disciplinary. Our students continue to have disciplinary results at a level that is very different depending on who you are, what sports you play, what theater program you're a part of than if you don't, right? So, a lot of these same things have popped just in our observational data, our doing listening tours and walking around and having conversations with kids, like at that local data. So, I don't, again, want to diminish the audit because it's super important, but at this point, that's one piece of the puzzle. We have so much local data that sort of supports these themes. But your concerns with the Equity Audit are definitely valid, and it's part of why... So, one of the things that the Equity Audit did do was say, here are your themes, and here are our suggested action steps. When Tyler and Susanna, and I'm not punting it to Tyler and Susanna, I'm definitely taking responsibility for it, but when Tyler and Susanna initially presented it, one of the ways they presented it was, hey, here's what Mid-Atlantic sort of told us to do, like here's what they're... And we very quickly learned, that's not, first of all, that's not who our NESU, like Ovu is. But second of all, that's just, it's not thoughtful, and it doesn't make space for all of the things that we've already learned. So, that sort of has slowed it down and said, we need to be much more thoughtful. Teachers haven't seen it. The board have only seen themes. Our Student Advisory Council has seen it and some specific student groups. But so, when Tyler and Susanna say they're going to present it in the fall, they mean that in earnest. They're going to present it to each of the boards as a draft. We're going to present it to the teacher groups as a draft. We're going to present it to the student groups as a draft, like now sort of give us feedback, if that sort of makes sense.
I have a question about that. I'm happy to hear about the local focus. I'm happy to hear that it's changed. I'm happy to hear that there's an emphasis on IEPs. I think those are all good things and very specific to our district. Just very quickly, as one example, one of my concerns about that audit, relatively minor one, was it was a very lengthy section on bilingual education that just is practically meaningless for us. Maybe in 20 years it'd be important, but not today. And there were a number of things like that. My follow-up question is, the student committee's seen this draft report, the parents committee's seen this draft report.
No, not the report. No one's seen the Equity Audit.
Okay.
No one.
Oh, sorry, the draft plan.
Yeah.
Why haven't we?
Because, because from feedback, and again, from the learning that's happened this year, we don't like the way, like we weren't happy with that. It wasn't thoughtful. Again, it was taking the work of a very well-respected group, by the way. Like Mid-Atlantic Consortium is both well-respected at the state of Vermont level and also national. But it really wasn't our work. It wasn't our goals. It didn't necessarily include all of the data that we wanted it to.
So, what kind of input are you expecting from parents and students that the board shouldn't be allowed to discuss or see?
Well, nothing. You are going to be. Like we've now completely... They've now completely scrapped what they presented and sort of have started over from scratch.
Okay. So, are we going to see it at the same time as those other committees?
I suppose it depends when the board meetings fall. Like I don't think it's, I think it's all stakeholder groups, we want to provide feedback on the draft plan.
Kristen, I hope you understand my frustration with this, which isn't personal at all, but it's been two years since I first raised this issue. And really have gotten very, very little back from the school, to the point where I feel like we're going to have a ridiculous situation where a member of board files a Freedom of Information Act request against his own school's system. I don't want to do that. But I do want to feel informed. And this is, by the way, this is not, has anything to do with Tyler personally, or... But this format that we were very used to, I can't read what's on the screen right now. We get these bullet points, you know, 12, 15 sometimes on these screens with tiny type. I have difficulty reading it. And I also have difficulty taking it all in and digesting it and thinking about it. In fact, I find that to be impossible. We have these presentations that are slideshows. They're called reports, but, you know, maybe I'm a dinosaur, but a report for me is something written that I can take my time reading and think about and develop questions about. We don't get that. And this is a major change, I expect, in our curriculum for our schools. To get a 20-minute report with, you know, lots of pictures quite often verbally, it's not going to cut it in terms of understanding what's happening. And that's been a frustration for many years for me on this board, and it's a particular frustration in this case because, again, I've been asking about it for two years and have received very, very little information. So, when we hear about stakeholders and the community and so forth and so on, I've got to question that, too, because stakeholders seem to be defined in a way that doesn't include the school board. And I find that very disturbing because we're, you know, small potatoes as we are, we're the elected representatives of the voters, to understand what's happening in the schools and to oversee the schools. And to be the last people informed about these things is very frustrating and continues to be a problem. So, I think I'm done with that rant.
There you go.
Yep.
So, I'll just, can I just really quickly respond to Derek?
Sure.
So, just a couple of things. One, I will not take responsibility for however Jean did or did not present or share information with you, but I will say that I can make sure that any... First of all, when you see the Equity Draft Action Plan, it's not a report. It won't be, it might be a presentation like a conversation. We will make sure it goes out at least with the board packet ahead of time, earlier if we can. So, that's one thing. Two, I can certainly work with all of my groups, my central office administrators, principals. We already have been talking about presentations for next year to make sure that it is certainly more engaging and easier for folks to... That's a fair sort of thing. And I don't even remember what the third thing was. I'm sure it's not, I'm sure it's not important, except to say that the Ovu Board, the BUU Board, and the RNSU Board will certainly have the same level of opportunity to engage in providing us feedback on the Equity Action Plan, if not more. It is not, I am, I'm a lot of things, but not transparent is not one of them. So, I assure you that we will, this is about us sort of slow-rolling it backwards. It didn't happen the way we want it to happen. Brendan knows, there's a lot in our schools that need to be improved. We're trying to be really, really thoughtful about it. And I will say, actually, much of the draft is not about curriculum. It's about adult beliefs, adult mindsets, and our practices for how we sort of work with students.
Yeah, and my complaint isn't about transparency from you at all, and I want to be very clear about that. My complaint is a large part of frustration with process. It's not just that we haven't seen the plan, it's that this process has been going on for a couple of years with really zero input from us, and despite my efforts to have some input in it. And to be presented with a really quick, as a society, we're over-relying on PowerPoint anyway, and complex PowerPoint slides are just impossible to follow.
Well...
So, you do have my word that as we present the draft to you, we will present it in a much better way and will provide a meaningful opportunity for you all to give us feedback and engage with it.
Thank you.
Yes, that's fair.
Kevin, I appreciate your comments and your frustration. And having been a professional educator for 35 years, I understand different learning styles, different presentations work for different people in different ways. And I want to encourage our folks to apply the elements of universal design for learning to our board needs for learning and our variety of styles. So, and maybe even a presentation on what is universal design for learning so that we can understand each other's points of view better, maybe. Because that is a very significant element of where things are going. Right?
I guess I have, it's a concern. I guess it's a question also. I don't know. I'm just, in my mind, I'm thinking, you know, we did an audit. Those who allowed themselves to be vulnerable on the audit, right, probably feel, it's been the whole school year, nothing's happened. Is there a concern that maybe we're like missing the...
I just heard that a whole lot of stuff has happened.
Yeah, but...
Since that audit and the focus of the...
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fair. That's certainly something that the coaches... So, we have a bunch of coaches sitting here. I think a lot of times they're the face for some of it, which doesn't feel, which doesn't feel fair to them, so I do want to recognize their work. I think, yes, I think that there are both their staff that are frustrated, it hasn't moved faster. Well, two things. One, the audit took an entire year. We really didn't get it until last summer. But yes, should we have been further along with this than we are right now? Yep, 100%, right? And so, that's just another one of those places that we say, this is what we need to do better, we're going to do better, we're committed to that. So, I would say that I'm looking at some of the coaches faces. Tyler, too, I'm sure are frustrated that we aren't further along. Students, yeah, I would say students both who participated in the audit and those... Laura King, can you mute? Never mind, I can mute you, that was awkward. I would say students who both participated in the audit and those who didn't, yeah, wish that adults in the schools were in a different place than they are. And then I would also suggest that any parent who either sits on our advisory committee, because Tyler meets with them with me a ton, or who didn't, also wishes that our schools were in different places. So, that sort of vulnerability, that sort of a, we need to do better, we're committed to doing better, will be sort of the mantra for next year. And it is our plan to get this draft out to all of you, like ASAP, in the fall.
Hi, I also have this barking dog, but do you mind if I add to any?
Go ahead.
What I'm hearing, which I really appreciate on the aggregate, is board members who want to partner on equity work. And I think, at least to some extent, sorry, my... And I think that is an asset, and it's not a reward, and so I commend that. And I think, when I think about what I have learned personally from teaming with folks around equity, around our audit, around our action plan, there needs to be fertile soil for that work to be productive and for it to be safe. And I think as we prepare to do all the things that we're saying we're going to do, I think, and this is not for me to declare, it probably sounds very sanctimonious, but I think working towards that soil, which would include like building relationships between board and E-folks, really coming to a shared agreement about community agreements and how we connect with each other, and also the use of protocols. I think that would be something that I would recommend is an investment, and I don't know who would take up that mantle, but I know that when we work towards equity goals, it's so deeply personal, there's so much history, and our identities are very much wrapped up in it, that it's really important to stay on the rails that many of those spaces are facilitated well, and there are protocols provided so that the parts of us that, you know, the human nature parts of us that interrupt each other or forget about power dynamics in the room, whatever, you know, those are acknowledged and they don't, they're not barriers to the work moving forward. I think for me, like as I was hearing this conversation, there was this desire to like reach out and be like, yes, let's partner. And an awareness that we actually have some pre-work to do if we want to do that well. That's not as simple as, you know, whatever the... I agree. I think I would love to move beyond the presentation format into actual, more real work with each other, real partnership, but there's some groundwork that needs to happen, I would think, so that that can happen. So, that's probably me being quite repetitive, but...
I'd love to add on to that, a shout-out, and I apologize for my dog. I was going to speak and then they got away from us in terms of an opportunity. But the idea of doing a UDL presentation of the plan, I just want to do a shout-out to that concept. Of course, that would be a wonderful way to try to structure this and to ensure engagement across all participants. And I think it would support that idea that Susanna just said, that we need to work through just some of our protocols. UDL, built-in scaffolds and protocols to support the engagement as we go further with this plan. So, shout-out for that concept, and that was very helpful to hear that.
And what we're trying to do next, what we will do next year is, we're going to have monthly community forums. So, for instance, September is likely going to be safety unless we can get it in in August, which would provide, for instance, October to be an opportunity for folks to have conversations about the Equity Action Plan if we're ready for it to go. But providing multiple opportunities for people to ask questions, because I think, back to Susanna's point, I think there's work to be done around building the relationships around it.
Thank you, folks, for those comments. You got a question?
I had a question as to whether or not the presentation will be emailed to us so we can look at it. Thank you. Cool. Thank you.
We typically do that.
Yeah.
Presentations.
Yes, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure the audit part that was, that we could share, that we could sort of tease out, that wasn't FERPA-protected. Fernanda said she doesn't think it got included. So, I will also go back and attach that for folks, too, because I took the time reading through.
We got your...
I didn't see anything, either.
Okay, so we'll email both the presentation and that to you all.
Can we get your monit...
Yeah.
I just would like to add that I do appreciate you guys acknowledging the fact that it wasn't working, what you were creating, and that slowing down was the right thing to do, you know, and to try to, you know, come up with something more useful to the community. So, that stepping back feels like nothing is happening, but a lot has happened to get to that place where you realize this is not really where we want to go. And to get the work done, I think that that was important to do.
I don't think there's any action on this at this point. I want to thank the folks, Susanna and Laura.
And Joni.
And Joni. Tyler.
He can't go.
He can't go yet, but... Other folks, if you need to leave, if you want to stay on, you may. But we're going to move on with our agenda. Thanks again. And no professional development discussion at this time. We have an executive limitations monitoring report on 2.9. Go ahead with that.
So far down.
I don't know what page that was on in the report.
19.
Thank you. Yes, 2.9 Equity in the Superintendent's Report. Any questions on that? Did folks have a chance to review that? Are we in a position to...
My question's got answered in the last discussion, so I'm going to accept the Superintendent's Report.
Second?
On 2.9?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And a second? All those in favor of accepting the Superintendent's Report, including the interpretation and evidence, 2.9. All those who agree, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you.
So, our next one, 4.6. Is that right? Board...
Yeah, Board Committee Principals.
Committee Principals.
Is there a motion or anything? I move we accept the 4.6 Board Committee Principals Monitoring Report. I move we accept the 4.6 board committee principles monitoring report.
And we hear a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Any questions? And hearing none, any, all those in favor of accepting this report, this monitoring report on committee principles, 4.6, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
One. Thank you. You have accepted this. And the third one on this.
The governance.
Is the governance investment.
Do you need, oh, nevermind.
Look for a motion to accept this.
I move we accept board monitoring report, 4.7 governance investment.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Any discussion?
I have a question about number one on the far right, examples of where we did not follow this. Training funds and retreat funds, I'm not, I'm not sure what the implication there is, that we didn't spend enough on them, or we didn't use the ones we had, or what?
You're looking for clarification in the wording? Yeah.
My assumption when I read that was that, that was examples of where we did follow this. And that was evidence of following the policy.
So is it good if we amend that to include maybe like a sentence? I mean, can we do that? Can we just?
For all of them?
I'm sure we can.
Like, money was.
Or you can just remove the, or did not follow this, if there's all examples in the positive.
In the positive, you could say did follow.
Right, period. Yeah, yeah, or did follow, right.
4.7, number one example. Did follow, okay.
So I'll move to add the words did follow colon at the top of that box.
In that box, okay. That would be clear. Thank you, Kevin. With those clarifications, can we move on to a question? Any other concerns? All those in favor of 4.7 monitoring report with the corrections on number one? Say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, you have supported that one. Now I need to go back to my agenda.
Jesus, Derek.
Go ahead.
Hold those.
It's the changes in the wording.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
This is supposed to be the way we wanted it, right?
Right.
She there, the way?
Yes.
The way it reads now should be the way that we set it, it should be.
In the governance process piece, general revisions. Yeah, we made the changes rather than he/she to their. Any, any concerns about that? Clarifications? Did we do it?
I'm looking for where it was.
It's pretty far down.
It's pretty far down.
It's easier to see online. I think online it was read.
I got it, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think the changes were highlighted in this version that was sent to us, right?
No, they weren't.
Weren't they just changed from May? Because you, it was your first reading, you approved it then.
We made suggestions for changes and now the changes are reflected.
So those were changed?
Yes.
And this is the, this would be a second reading, is that right?
Yes, this is your second reading to adopt.
We were pretty clumsy about the changes that we suggested.
Add according to law to 4.5.5. Is that done?
Um, no, we haven't, we haven't talked about 4.5 yet. We're on the general revisions.
Yeah, yeah. Isn't one of the general revisions add, add or according to law to 4.5.5 and I don't.
Yeah, it's not.
I don't see it.
4.5.5.
Has it been added in somewhere else?
I don't know if Derek was breaking it down.
What part was it supposed to show up in?
4..
4.5.
Board.
Oh, yeah, board. Members' code of conduct. Members will respect the confidentiality appropriate to issues of a sensitive nature.
That was my comment.
Okay. Can you clarify?
Yeah, that is, I wanted it to go in 4.5. Because we may have confidentiality matters that we need to follow according to law, such as FERPA.
So you want to add comma according to law after the word nature?
Yeah, correct.
So moved. We have to move that.
So, yeah, we approved that, yeah, in March.
Yeah, okay.
We did, we just didn't, it's not reflected in the changes.
Yeah.
Okay. So we need to make those.
Just add according to law.
Add according to law.
I'm on it.
All those in favor of?
Make the motion.
It was already, the change was supposed to happen, so technically that's just our error. So they can, if they choose to adopt it, it will be adopted with comma according to law in it.
All right, I'll, I'll move to accept the changes and the document as amended. Is that good?
I have a point I want to raise in section four that I love everyone else's opinion on. So under 4.1 governing style, nowhere in this document do we say that we follow Robert's rules of order. But in meetings, it has been said that that's how we govern the actual meetings. Is that something we should have in section 4.0?
We have.
Is that in our ESU policy?
What's that?
Is that in our ESU policy?
I don't think it's a policy. I haven't found it anywhere. Like, we've had discussions that we follow Robert's rules, but I have not found it in.
No, we don't have a policy position that we follow formal Robert's rules of order. We have, we use, because of, we haven't.
We use Robert's rules for small boards.
Yeah, we use Robert's rules for small boards. It's, it's a small operation. We haven't had to. We haven't had to wrap ourselves in that kind of a process to function. You know, we can do things pretty well amongst ourselves. So we do, I mean, we do have process that's Robert's rules.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, do we want to write that down?
No, because if we do, then we're locked in.
Technically, aren't we required to by law, because we're a public entity, to follow Robert's rules?
In an open meeting forum.
So do we need to include it as a policy because it's already required?
Well, I don't think so, because if, if you've ever seen a formal Robert's rules of order process used by an organization, it really chills the air. And I really don't suggest that for this group at this time. If there's something that is so contentious that we can't function, then that's the time to bring out the book and start to use it. But informally enough, I think we function well and we do talk about Robert's rules and we do make motions and we do.
I mean, the leg, you, you can certainly create, you can certainly make a policy, but you don't have the flexibility to not use Robert's rules of order. The Vermont legislature makes it such for you. There's a statute that says.
It's in the statute, yes, in the education statute. We are already tasked with using some kind of Robert's rules of order. I mean, I'd rather not put it into a policy language that would force us to have a parliamentarian by my side to run a meeting.
Right, and I just don't think it's required because it's a statute. We don't need to repeat statute.
Correct.
Okay.
Is my point.
I see.
That's not good to me.
So there's a motion on the floor, by the way, to approve.
Uh, what's the motion?
To approve the changes.
So are you doing both changes at one, in one motion? There's two different changes.
There's two different changes. There is a change in 4.5.
Right, that's one of the changes, and then the other change that.
Is the him/her?
Is the, yes.
And that didn't make, get made either.
That, that motion never got made.
It didn't get made and the changes haven't been made.
The changes are not made?
The change, there's only, there's a him/her and it's still there. I mean.
Where is that?
It's a 4.4.2 letter C, the chair.
Hence why it's not highlighted.
Chair's role, yeah, chair's role, the chair may represent to the board, blah, 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 and stating the chair decisions, interpretations within the area delegated to him or her. And I guess it's supposed to say.
So 4.2, what part of it?
4.4.2.
Oh, 4.4.2, sorry.
2.2C.
The chair may.
Thank you for noting that.
And I scanned the document.
So that's the only one?
That's the only instance of.
But again, you already made those general revisions, so you can still adopt it.
Yeah, if you say wherever, you could just use the noun again, like the chair.
You could also say.
You would just do the chair, and when you can't, go to there.
Right, yeah.
That is what we said, it just seems like it needs another eye.
None of which are reflected in this.
There's a couple of places where that didn't happen.
Yeah.
This is because Melinda's out.
Right.
But yes, the change, the changes as recommended are still what we're going to approve. They're just not necessarily reflected yet in the document.
Okay, so they will be.
Right.
We've already, we've already had a motion to make those changes.
Yes.
We just need the editorial to continue.
But you haven't made a motion for the second reading. You made a motion last month for the first reading.
No, we did, he did.
He just made it.
He made a motion.
I didn't hear him.
Sorry.
Well, I thought you were then talking about 4.5.
Did someone second?
I'll second.
Yes.
First for Kevin, second from Greg, to adopt the changes as previously stated.
Yes.
I thought he was talking about the 4.5.
Will clean up.
It's already been, that change of 4.5 has already been made from the last day. It just isn't reflected.
With the according to law.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. It's, it's in the notes, but it's not in the.
All those in favor of making those, the second reading with that caveat that we will continue the editorial cleanup of that, those changes?
Yes.
Hey, Dan, can you check the sound? Natalie said she can't hear.
Uh, nobody's in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
That was Michael.
You need to say say aye.
He got distracted.
Oh, say aye, right, thank you, sorry.
You forgot that part.
Opposed? Then we adopted that.
All right.
As a second reading.
Yep.
Thank you. Sorry, I gotta go back. Oh, the Hawk Hill discussion? Two things. There was, the lumber project has gone forward. The, there was also some pine that was cut and.
That works.
Put into boards that are currently being seasoned. The, the library moved to the town hall and is functioning there. And what they had to do to make that work was, was go ahead within their budget to purchase the tables that were going to be made by that pine wood. So in the email from Len, who's been coordinating this, there was a suggestion from him that we might consider using that lumber as a fundraiser. I believe the intent in his message was as a fundraiser for the library. But in some conversation with Lori, and we can have a discussion right now about that availability of, of some lumber from the Hawk Hill property. My position is one that if we talk about fundraising for the library with some of our assets, that gets very complicated. And we have a whole fundraising protocol. And I would, what I would prefer, you know, the library needs remit. And what I would prefer is making that lumber available to the school programs, the tech program and the Muslamu program. Make that available to them for projects and, or, or school-related kinds of things. You know, it's a school asset. That would be a suggestion. I'm, I'm open to other comments and conversations.
This is a comment. When Mr. Karpak rearranged the shop area two years ago, close to, anyway, a few semesters ago, the lumber in the lumbery room was moved out. And there was quite a bit of it, and it was restacked in a new location. There may not be enough room, we'd have to ask, but there may not be enough room for additional lumber in there.
It can be stored in a variety of ways. It doesn't have to be in the classroom storage room. You know, I mean, it could be stickered outside even and accessed for other projects. Yes?
I mean, the original intent or the original mission of this particular wood was that it was harvested from the Hawk Hill property and was going to be designated with something to link this as a contribution and would be designated as such. So I'm just wondering if, now that we're sort of maybe shifting the usage of the wood, if whatever happens with it carries with it that same kind of significance?
The need, the need identified for this pine wood, the hardwoods are still available and they're being seasoned and they're going to be used for the library projects as intended. In the hardwood section, but the pine woods, those needs were addressed before we were able to.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's another, something that, you know, needs to be built here that.
Well, there surely could be, but I, it's, it's a resource that's available and can be. Made available to the school. I mean, I don't know how to technically, I don't know where it would fit budgetarily or, or anything like that.
I just meant that, I just meant that, like, this was made from wood, from Hawk Hill. Like, just something to.
Surely, well, I would, I would hope that that.
If that's important.
You know, the students were involved in the harvesting of it, in the sawing of it and in, you know, in the whole process so far. So those students that were involved will, will also know that this Hawk Hill wood is there. And if it's in part of the, if it's available to the classes that would likely use it, Muslamu and the tech program, then those folks will certainly carry that, carry that flag and that representation of that wood from being, hey, guys, this is ours and it's part of us, kind of thing.
Have we reached out to those programs to see if they have a use for it? Or is this just?
I think it came to you first.
Uh, no, this was, not those programs.
No, I mean, you all to make the decision, if you want, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we've come here, I mean, this is our decision first, whether we make it available to them. If they don't want it, then we can, then we'll have another discussion. But. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we offer the wood to the Muslamu and OV tech ed programs at their discretion.
Any further?
If we're offering it to both of them and they both say they want it, is there, does it work well together? Or is it one program?
They work well together. They, they play well together.
Battle Royale.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, then that's the way it's going to be. Thank you very much for that. Thing two on Hawk Hill discussion is I'm leaving. Uh, thing two on Hawk Hill discussion is, um, I'm leaving, I'm moving, I'm not going to be part of Hawk Hill Committee. Um, there is someone from the board that, um, will be following that committee. Um, so consider that. Probably, it will probably be under discussion at the retreat. Uh, I, at the last meeting, um, I let you folks know that I wasn't going to continue on that, and that's firmed up, and I'm not going to continue being on the board as well. So, um, that's a different discussion, but, um, somebody's going to have to take that over, and that will be, you know, four meetings a year unless something special happens.
Do you need someone to be nominated? Or how does that work?
Don't know. It's a, it's a separate committee that was formed, uh, it was a superintendent's.
I don't know the protocol.
I would suggest, since you have, for instance, Kevin as your rep on Stafford Tech, right, that sort of, that you have, uh, a motion to have someone be the Hawk Hill representative.
I wanted to know, I think there were a couple of us who expressed interest, so I, I just want to make sure that everybody gets. I think Natalie was also interested.
Oh.
Um, it would.
Did you hear us?
It would be helpful if, if somebody was ready. Um, we could.
When's the next meeting?
We don't have a meeting scheduled at this time, so.
And we have more than one representative from the board? I don't, no, okay.
There's a formal membership. I mean, certainly any board member can participate, and please do.
I nominate Fernando Canales to be representative to the Hawk Hill Board.
Can Natalie hear us?
Yeah.
Is she exposed?
She voted on the last one.
Natalie, are you interested?
Yeah.
I would do it if nobody else can do it, just because I'm already on three committees, so this would be the fourth one. I, I just don't want to, um, commit to something that I may not have time for.
Is there anyone else here who's interested?
Thank you, Natalie. Um, is there a second for, for Fernando?
I'll second.
Okay. Any others? Sounds great.
I'd love to continue to explore the school to Hawk Hill connections, you know, I think that would be my, my interest.
I can transition a lot of things.
Yeah.
A lot of information to you about what's been happening and what might happen in the future.
So is Hawk Hill the property we own across the road somewhere?
Oh, behind us.
Behind us.
Down back.
Oh, Brandon Road.
Oh, I thought that was Hawk Hill, that's why I was, that's lost.
These, um, the top of the cliffs, there's 230 acres back there.
There's trails back there.
Yeah, I've been out in the trails, I didn't realize that was Hawk Hill.
Yep.
Hawk Hill roads across the road, that's why I was kind of confused.
It looks it.
Well, thank, I got you.
Right, okay. All nominations closed. All those in favor of, uh, Fernando being on Hawk Hill Committee?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you all. Thank you, Fernando. And we'll meet.
Learning curve, yes, yes, absolutely.
And spend some time, I got, I got maps and all kinds of goodies.
Yeah, no.
He's got maps.
Where are we next here?
Facilities.
Facilities update.
Yes, this is good news. Um, we finished two of Nashabie's facility fund projects and saved a little over $15,000. We also just want to confirm with you all that the Lothrup replaced, repaired the curb and sidewalks. We didn't end up needing local funds. We obviously got those federal, Save the Schools grant dollars for, um, so that's $35,000. That doesn't need funding, resulting in additional savings. Also, RNESU surplus food service can only be spent on food service costs. Lothrup's freezer condenser is eligible, so we are going to use the RNESU funds for that, which saves the Ovu Facility Fund a little over 22, um, which results in overall savings of previously authorized by you projects totaling $73,200. We are recommending that you consider reinvesting the savings into the Ovu Middle School project. We anticipate more than half of this project cost will be completed with employees, and although it is technically eligible for S R III funding due to Davis Bacon Act requirements, um, using federal funds for in-house labor is risky because of compliance. So we're asking you, there is a sample motion to reinvest money from your facilities funds, um, from Lothrup and Nashabie into Ovu.
Excuse me if I should know this already, and I probably should, but I don't know what the Ovu U M H S middle school project is.
Do you want to talk about that? Do you know more details than me?
Um, yeah, I'll go first.
Okay, go ahead.
You fill in what I. I lack. Uh, so essentially, uh, we're looking at, um, taking, so the middle school classrooms are all over the building, so they're not in one cohesive spot. So we're looking at redesign, not a huge construction, but redesign where those classrooms are and how the middle school can be separate from high school spaces. So again, create more of a middle school model within, uh, the high school rather than a junior high.
Thank you.
And we also, I, I believe we told you last time, or it's in the superintendent's update, who even knows? But we also have, um, a study with Naylor and Breen, I believe, for the bathrooms, and so, um, that would potentially be able to use some of the S R III funds that we previously thought we'd do the middle school project.
The locker rooms, you mean?
Yeah.
The locker rooms.
But we're waiting on this, like, we need the architects to tell us.
Yeah.
So the 73, 200, would that be the total budget, or would that be in addition to the middle school project?
I don't think you authorized anything for the middle school project before.
Yeah, I don't think we did. I think it was 150 something?
Huh.
I don't know that we authorized it per se, right, because they're S R.
You authorized the, well, so you don't authorize S R.
Right.
But you do authorize your facility funds.
Right.
So if, if.
We authorized facility funds, so we need to do that with this fund.
Right, but the, the budget for the middle school project, that's mostly S R?
Well, so, so I would suggest if it ends up being more than the 73, too, that would be money that she, they needed people besides in-house labor to accomplish, and then that would be eligible for S R. These are our fellows, ladies too. These are our people, um, doing the work for us over the summer.
And we don't want to pay prevailing wage, is that?
We don't want to pay for what?
That's what, uh, Davis Bacon Act is, right, prevailing wage on federal, federally funded projects.
Well, but, so that would violate all of our contracts. So I think it was more about that we have people that are in-house, willing and able to do the work, um, so we would prefer to use our folks.
Rather than having to put out bids and so forth.
Yeah, yeah. Davis Bacon is super, super risky and time-consuming potentially, and then we run the risk of not being able to complete the project before school starts. There are other uses for your facilities funds at this point that are being requested.
Well. Is there anybody making this motion? Is there a name on this yet?
I, I'm still not clear on if this is. Does anyone have a copy of the facilities approval?
The facility approval?
Or the, the thing we voted to where we were earmarked all the money.
It would have been last, it would have been last month, right?
That should probably be at the top, right?
It should be in your minutes, yes. What, what's your concern? Jeremy?
Uh, it's not a concern necessarily, I just want to understand whether, like, is it throwing another 73,000 at a project? Or is it replacing money that was already earmarked for that project and then where the money's going that's already in the project? Like, did we appro?
You haven't approved this project before.
No, not, not, there was, yeah, that's why I want to see the notes, because there, I thought we had approved money for the, for this.
We approved some money for a, for a.
After-school program, this is.
Well, we approved some funding to explore a middle school on the Pittsburgh property.
No, so we, we didn't approve the money, because it's S R money, but we did approve the project using S R money.
Well, Arneus Hughes the only one who approves S R.
Right. We didn't approve the money, but we did have a conversation about to do the project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's certain, there's never any guarantee you're able to use S R dollars, right? So there, if you don't decide to do this locally, um, and, and this isn't meant to come out as a failed threat, but there's never any guarantee that you're able to get this done by the, the start of school, right? So there, that's the danger of using federal funds is.
Well, but so we also using, so I don't know what the number was, if it was like 150,000 of S R funds that were going to be tried to be applied to this project. Does that mean this project now has a bigger budget, or does it mean we're no longer going to use those 73,200 of S R funds? You're not going to apply, try to apply it to this? Or are we just increasing?
So are you wanting to, you're wanting to supplant S R funds with this?
No, I don't want it to. I'd rather it was an addition, but it's not clear from what we're voting on.
But does that project have a budget?
This is an additional budget item, or if it's replacing an existing budget item?
My interpretation was that it was an additional, but I, I don't know the details.
Wait, can you frame that again, so I can see if I understand it?
So we had, we didn't approve it, but approved the project happening, not where the money was coming from. And I wish I had the facilities.
Yeah.
Fund report right here. I feel like. If we had approved, say, $100,000, to make the number easy, what I'm saying is, does that now mean the middle school project gets 173,200? Or is the idea that the S R funds are just not even, you're not going to try to use the S R funds, and it's just going to be?
I think they are not trying, they are trying to not use S R funds for it. So there would be other uses for those S R funds. You would be taking your local Ovu facilities funds and moving it to a different Ovu facility use, and then those 73 dollars that she, 73,000 that she had earmarked for S R, she's moving to somewhere else, because S R is fully budgeted.
And so what happens to the previous plan we had voted on?
Back on, uh, Hawk, or April 11th?
Mm-hmm.
No, that was when, yeah, April 11th was the meeting.
On May 16th, we approved to put some of the surplus, 50% of it.
Into the facility fund.
Yep. Half, into the facility fund, half into the after-school program, but I don't.
Yeah, that's not what I'm thinking about at all.
No, so you're, you're thinking before that.
Yeah, so it was April 11th, we approved, we didn't approve, well, we allowed 150,000 to be used to paint. It was, we were told it was painting, right, for middle school, middle school painting, I'm assuming that's what it is?
No, the work is much more than painting. Yeah.
What was that, the 150,000, though?
I don't, I mean, I, so this would be either, so this would be, if you've already put money in your facilities funds, this would be in addition to what you already had in the facility fund for Ovu.
Which is what I'd like to see happen, I just want to make sure it's not supplanting that.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was.
Hold on, though, because if, if that money can be used for the locker rooms, that's a different discussion.
Can I just clarify? This is just leftover money that we want to use now for something else, correct?
What's the date of the meeting?
Like, it's money that we saved.
It's not really money that we saved, though, it was a clerical error. The 35,000 saved from Lothrup was never supposed to come out of the budget.
But you saved 15,000, and Arneus Hughes given you 22,000.
Okay, well, some of it we did save, yes.
I mean, it's more, it's certainly more than a clerical thing. I don't, I, I texted Brenda, um, I can't find the, the OV middle school number.
I think the email came out on.
If I may speak about the merits of the project, this is a really good idea.
Mm-hmm.
To get the, the junior high kids separated, and if we can do it over a summer, we should do it.
Yeah, the sooner the better.
Agreed.
From what I understood from when Mr. Ruppel was here, is they could use as much money as possible towards this. So I think it would be a great idea to make sure this is in addition to that 100, whatever it was.
Yeah, this is certainly not taking away, the, the, this is very clearly, um, written in, for instance, the agenda. You have, you're getting something from Nashabie, something from Lothrup, something from RNESU, and it's going to Ovu. It's not moving anything else that you've already set aside for Otter Valley. So there, there's no hidden, this is coming from somewhere else, like supplanting, like that's, those are the three projects that it came from.
Right, right, but, so I just want to make sure the S R funds that were initially, that we had voted to spend on this project will, how, what was the amount again?
150,000?
So, yeah, I want to make sure that now this project has that 150 plus the 73, rather than this project becomes 73, and then we don't use any S R funds.
Well, so, yeah, so I think that, so, okay, so now I understand, yes, so Brenda is suggesting you would use 73, that's about half of what, so they can accomplish it locally, right? So that's what your Ovu's funding. S R would cover the other part. Right, so she says very clearly, we anticipate more than half of this project's cost can be completed in-house, so that you can use Ovu facilities funds without having to worry about Davis Bacon. So then the other would be still funded out of, again, you not approving the S R funds, but you approving the use of S R funds for that facilities project would continue to go there.
And so will this increase the scope of the project?
I don't think so. I don't think it's meant to increase the scope of the project.
But it can.
But it could if the locker rooms came into play.
That's what I'm saying, I think that's what we should vote on, is increasing the scope of the project, because what Mr. Ruppel had said was like, this was like, he could scrape by with, but there was a whole lot more he'd rather do to compartmentalize the middle school. So like, if this adds another 50% to the budget, it seems like that would be helpful.
Can I have a motion, uh, or somebody's name on this motion, so we can discuss it?
That we approve the 73,200 to be spent in addition to S R funds for the middle school project.
I second that.
Um, that's not this motion.
It's not that motion.
No, but.
Do we have to go with that motion?
I can.
No, we don't.
You don't.
We don't have to?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
No, sorry.
I did.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I have a concern, I think that, we pulled a lot of money out of the facilities fund, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do this. What I am saying is, I think the locker rooms are as important, if not more important, and I don't want us to spend all of our money now and then come to regret it later. So I, I don't care.
Are the locker rooms not also budgeted for a project?
They are not.
No, you don't even have a number from the architect, unfortunately.
Right, and they, that number may blow us right out of the water.
That's a good point.
But you said we could use S R funds for that.
But she also said S R's were fully funded, right, so we.
Fully budgeted.
Budgeted, right, so the money's all spoken for. So if we save 73,000 out of that money now, right, is that what you're saying? We would save 73,000 in S R money?
That could go towards.
Could we hold on to that in case we found?
Yeah, you can hold, you can hold it in S R, because first of all, that's a flexible, that's a flexible plan, right? Brenda would just need to update that. It's currently budgeted for OV facilities anyways. I don't think the grain size even says middle school project, so yes.
Is there a timeline on the S R funds?
It's this year.
So you're saying yes to the 73 to go towards this project, so we can use local people, but save the 73 that it saves us in S R for the locker project?
I'm saying yes, if we can do that. If we can't, then I would rather save the 73,000 in our facilities fund, and we figure out the prevailing wage side of it and do the project also. I don't want it to not happen, but I, we need to make sure that we do keep that other project in mind, too. If we can't do it in the timeframe that we have with the S R money, then we may not have a choice.
Eric?
I'm sorry.
I, I also just, uh, I see the locker room thing as part of the middle school project, honestly.
Yeah.
So it's all the same, and I do think it's a priority, because when we talked about the middle school model in the task force, one of the things. the middle school model in the task force, one of the things was the locker room. And you can try and move the classrooms and all this stuff, but when school's over and the middle school students go get changed and they're around, then the 12th graders, and I can speak from experience of my own kids, like, that's where the shocking, like, sort of language is happening. So the more we can do to kind of make that more of a private space to isolate middle school students from high school ones, the better. So I think it's part of it. I hope that's in your guys' thoughts as well, with improving the middle school model in all aspects.
I mean, I think that the locker rooms are on everyone's mind. I think right now, the worry is that, like Brett said, we have no idea what they're going to come back from.
And by the way, I don't think we should hold off on this middle school improvement. We can't just sit here and do nothing just because we don't know what the cost of that is. We have this money. We know we can improve the middle school climate by doing this. I don't think we should, I think we should get it done, so.
But do we understand what, what are the actual, I keep hearing vague words, like, it's tricky to use for in-house labor. I mean, what does that mean? Does that mean we can't do it, or we could do it?
Well, I think that if you, if you fund your, if we fund this project for Esser, then I don't think that they feel comfortable using in-house labor, that it's more costly and it's risky. And so by not using in-house labor, I think that Brenda and the facilities team is worried that they won't get the middle school project done this summer.
They have to go out to bid.
Yeah, I, I think that it, I think that it's simply about that.
It's, it's the flexibility to get it done this summer.
Well, understood, but I, I, see, I didn't read it that way. The way I read it was, we were going to have to pay our in-house people more money because of prevailing wage in order to have them do it. That's how I read it.
Well, there's a time, it's the time factor.
But my point is, if it's simply a matter of money, then let's just leave things the way they are, fund it with Esser, and save the money, because we have another project we know is coming. If it's not a simple matter of, like, if we can't do it, flat out can't do it, then obviously, yeah. But I just, I'm trying to understand, it was very vaguely worded, like, oh, we, it's complicated, we could do it, but maybe we shouldn't do it, or we can't do, I mean, it wasn't, it just wasn't clear.
Derek?
I'm talking about my words.
Natalie's had her hand up for some time.
Thank you. Natalie?
I think my comment was that if this is timely and we want to get it done before the summer and have it in place for when school starts, I, I would vote to approve it.
Okay, I, I got, and...
I'm a middle schooler myself.
Mr. Ruppel just hopped on for the executive session, but Brenda got back to me and said they previously estimated 150,000 to be used out of Esser, but doing it in-house, with updated numbers, that that is the full project that they're asking for. The 73,000 will fund the Mr. Ruppel's Otter Valley Middle School project, not the locker rooms.
No, but we still have access to 150,000 in Esser funds.
That would be a Brenda question, but yeah, she had previously put that in Esser, yes.
And when do we have to spend that by?
This year.
On 30th? And, well, right.
But we're waiting to hear.
No, no, you, yeah, yeah, it has to be fully budgeted this year, but you can have, I don't think...
No, I meant the cost, we're waiting to hear.
If we have a project and it's not done this year, though, would that be okay?
Projects are different than people. Can it still be funded through FY '26, or it's done?
It's done, yeah.
June 30th?
I think even construction...
Yeah, I think even construction has to be done.
Yeah.
June 30th of 2024.
24.
Are you ready for the motion?
Yep.
She's at the lake and can't log on.
Do we want any input from Mr. Ruppel?
Mr. Ruppel, do you have any input to share?
The motion, please.
So, so are we including Esser funds in the motion?
No. Brenda said that, well, here's Brenda's thing, that this is not used in addition to Esser, that the project cost that, for the middle school project, is 73,200.
So we need to change the motion.
So...
So let me just...
Would, uh, would you withdraw the motion and go back to the original proposed motion?
What if I amend the motion to clarify the middle school project includes the locker rooms?
Well, but we don't know if it's going to work.
Then you won't be able to, then you won't do it.
Would that allow us, put that towards, like, put the Esser funds right away towards that locker project?
You're not using Esser funds towards the locker room right away. You'll have, you'll run into the same problems that you're running in with just the Ovu middle school design. But I think if you, like, to Greg's point, I think the language is, you're reinvesting 73,000 of savings already realized from your approved facility just to the Ovu Middle School project, right? So if it's 73,000, and then we get the architect's thing back and it says it's another 30, there's nothing to say that we can't use Esser for that 30. You're just saying, yes, we want to send this 73 to the, the middle school project.
And if we don't get anything back from the architect in the time we need to use the Esser funds, do we just lose them?
We will not lose Esser funds. We won't lose Esser.
What's your pleasure?
I'll rescind my motion.
Seconded. Agree?
I think it was for Natalie.
Was it me, or was it you, Greg?
No, it was you.
Am I the, the second one?
I think you were the second.
Okay, then I, I agree to the second.
Okay. Back to the original motion.
I'll move the original motion, I don't have the wording in front of me.
I have it here. Motion made by Kevin, seconded by who?
Barbara.
Barbara. To reinvest 73,000 of savings already realized for the, from the approved Ovu summer 2023 facility fund project scheduled into the middle school project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. It was a great discussion, folks.
Quietly, we're best.
Arne Esu Board Update.
No, you, you, wait, hold on. Lori put something in there for your, you all to think about.
Okay.
She's suggesting a retreat, a joint meeting with Arne Esu and BUU to do some sort of a training, and we'll send out a doodle poll.
Are we looking at August?
FYI, that's coming. Is that correct?
The doodle poll?
No.
It's coming.
This, a three-way meeting?
Yes.
Boards.
Well, that's what she's saying.
She's proposing that.
She's proposing that in the messages on the board meeting right now.
Do we need to do that?
No, she's going to send a doodle poll.
I see, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that in addition to the retreat?
No, I think she's trying to do, like, half that and then maybe, like, break off.
Arne Esu Board Update.
Barbara?
Um...
Superintendent? I wasn't here.
Ooh, I will say that the state just passed a piece of legislation, a statute, Act 29, around school safety, which is now mandating options-based drills, policy language at the SU level around fire drills and emergency preparedness and access control visitor management. So Arne Esu Board did sort of a first read.
Will access control be an issue for any of our buildings?
I don't think so. And we already have a pretty robust admin memo on it. This will just supersede that memo.
Thanks. Okay. Review our annual work plan. Well, no meetings are going to be held in July. We need to confirm August retreat meeting dates.
Nope, you need to wait for Lori.
Lori, right. Was she going to send out?
Yep, doodle poll.
Right, we were, we were going to work on, she had suggested later in August.
Derek, would you be able, even if you're no longer on the board officially, would you be able to possibly join us as, for farewell?
Oh, sure.
In that we're learning very, we're learning very much now that you're leaving us.
Okay.
If you could join us.
Oh, sure.
It's me.
Communications, Superintendent's informational report?
Yep, I will be brief. Again, we know there's lots of summer work happening, and as Brenda has no service, she seems to have an awful lot of service, so she just wants to let folks know, the design for the locker rooms has already been paid for, for Esser. So again, the architects are under contract. We signed that they are working on it this summer. They hope to have locker room conceptual plans and costs ready to come to you in the fall, and they do hope to use Esser funds to be able to make that happen. And in addition to the 1.2 million in federal, oh, and additionally, we are spending 1.2 million of Esser on facilities projects in the nine weeks of summer.
So are we just, the locker rooms, are we just redoing them, or are they making them, moving them into the other room, making them bigger?
I don't know. I do know that Brenda asked for, and I think maybe, maybe Michael knows, Brenda asked for several different versions of what is hap, is possible, so that we can come back to you all and say what seems feasible.
Where are we with planning for facilities spending for career and tech ed?
I, that's a question that I would not only like Michael, but Brenda to be a part of, so anything I'd say would be texting her.
Okay. I'll take that.
Is one of the summer projects to put the modular thing here, is that happening?
The modular is happening, I think that, Michael's hands raised, I think that the modular won't be done until October. Michael?
Michael, go ahead. Hi, all. Yeah, so those were a few, few different questions about facilities projects happening at Otter Valley that I'd be happy to answer. I will confess to not knowing all the information about funding sources, that's something that Brenda has, has been more deeply involved in. The locker rooms, as Kristen said, were under contract with the architect to redesign the locker rooms to put four gender-neutral changing areas on the east wall of the building that are accessible from the hallway. Those will include, I think, a shower stall in each, and I think there's a couple of different designs, one with, one with a couple of bathrooms and one without. And I think the architect needed to figure out how easy that plumbing project would be. So what they will come back with is a plan that can be given to a contractor. The modular, yeah, Kristen, your timing is correct on that. We anticipated it would be put on the ground in October, so they're doing some prep work this summer. But then, you know, I, Rich and I have been speaking about it, I have, I am planning for it to be operational in second semester. You know, once they put it on the ground, there's still, like, electrical and plumbing work to do. So we're planning to have that as a second semester option. And then somebody asked about career in tech ed. We are doing a pretty significant overhaul of the HVAC system down there this summer. And we also put a chunk of what was trending towards surplus money into upgrading storage and furniture in the tech ed lab. I think those were the questions. Anything else?
No, thank you.
That's related for me.
Anything else on your report?
Nah, I mean, we, central office summer hours, we, Arne Esu Board awarded the food service contract to Abbey Group again, and I, I sent out to all parents, and I will also send a reminder that all students receive the summer P E V T benefit, which can be spent in a bunch of different ways, and even if you are not eligible for pre-reduced lunch. And so more information will be coming out in July, when that releases.
Okay, and you spoke about the...
Locker room.
Let's talk being, reach out.
Good job.
Awesome. Great, thanks. We don't have a date for the retreat, but there will be some doodling coming to you about dates.